No.
It must be him, yeah. It's 5:35. We can buy my pockets.
A pleasure lesions to fly in the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Hey. Do we want to bring the scouts on in?
Do you want more there?
It doesn't matter, they're fine.
I'll just scan out.
Stand at the back of the kitchen.
I think they can.
Normally it texts me or something, I haven't, normally it texts me or something. You want us up there, or you want just go ahead and, um, behind you or not?
Well, welcome Scott. Before, I did have the proclamation that I wanted to read because since this is scouting anniversary week, but before I do that, I just want to kind of make sure other people hear this too. I was picking the brains of all your leaders about what are some of the things that you guys do? Because it's more than just going to weekly meetings, which I understand that you see somebody at least once a week, which I appreciate that kind of dedication that you choose to be in a group and you, and you take it serious. It's at least once a week, you're getting together with good leaders and good, good peers. This year that I found out that on your scouting for food where you guys had to go put all the flyers out and then you had to go and collect all the food. You raised over 2,700 pounds of food.
Wow.
That is brilliant. All of that money goes to the food bank in Hiawatha, right? That's, and so what a great thing for our, our community. Coming up in May, you do the trash to trash where you guys are out there working hard, picking up trash and cleaning up the community. So that is very much appreciated. Of course, we had our popcorn sales, but we already missed that. So nobody getting up this year. So next year, Calum didn't hit up for, for some popcorn. You have your Pinewood Derby coming up, and then we also have the district Pinewood Derby, which that's February 5th, and we're gonna have troops from, and I don't know if you've heard of it, but coming in from Ashington and St. Joe and other surrounding areas. So you guys are going to be hosting that, which is an exciting thing. Over 50-ish of you were out here doing this. So thank you for all of that. Am I missing anything, leaders, that you would like to put out there as well? This, now that you're on horn, this is well deserved. I could ask all the kids, but.
May I say something? Yes. When they have their overnight camp out at the city, like, the cleanup is remarkable. And I want to thank you, the scouts and the leaders, because adults don't act there and they clean what was good and giving them. So I, I really applaud you. That's, that's good citizenship. Thank you.
So, um, in honor of scouting anniversary week, to the people of Hiawatha, Kansas. Whereas the Boy Scouts slash Cub Scouts of America have been at the forefront of instilling timeless values in youth since its founding in 1910. Whereas this national youth movement has made serving others through its value-based program, its mission, and whereas the Cub slash Boy Scouts of America is committed to helping millions of youth succeed by providing the support, friendship, and mentoring necessary to live happily and fulfilling life. And whereas the Pony Express Council of the Boy Scouts of America and its Cub Scout packs, Boy Scout troops, and venturing crews are celebrating scouting's 113th anniversary. Whereas there are more than four community organizations that make scouting available for more than 60 youth members in our area who participate in a scouting program as a means of character building, citizenship training, and personal fitness. Therefore, via resolve that I, Becky Chamberlain, Mayor of the City of Hiawatha, Kansas, designate February 5th through the 11th, 2023, as scouting anniversary week and express the appreciation of our citizens to the Pony Express Council and the Boy Scouts, Cub Scouts of America for their interest in, in dedication to America's youth. Thank you very much, guys. So if your leaders don't want to say anything, are you sure? I should have given you a heads up, instead of going to discuss a speech. Or do you have you scouts have anything to say? I'm not going to put you on the spot, but if you'd like to, you can all bop up here on the dais and we can get a picture of all you guys, if that's okay? Who's taking my seat? All sleeves in, everybody's reading errors. Scott? So. Might be that.
Want to get up on your knees, dude?
Yeah, they won't be able to.
You're a big boy, aren't you?
Me neither. Didn't either, I didn't grab any. I can, I guess I can find it right now. Can we have Dave Wilson go front off really quick? Okay, I appreciate that.
Yeah, it's not coming up on my phone. Thank you.
Can we go to the public drive underneath? Agenda is 2023, 2023.
I'm on the regular agenda for my expeditions in the Royals.
The one part about. I, I need the.
Um, I'm not comfortable with changes I was last here, but I know that I talked about our December show that we had, or it was open to books of plants, and we also had our classes during each of the school weekend. And we had 48 people come to our reception on Saturday. And it was a lot of fun. We had Stephanie Dummel from St. Joe, and then we do another set for her acoustic. They were performing lovely songs for background music for the holidays. And, um, we called it our second annual because we kind of keeping the tradition up for this coming year. And in, in winter, it seemed to work out really well for the teachers to be able to gather several pieces of artwork from their students and then we got to showcase it throughout the entire library. And so that was a great deal of fun. And other special events we have coming up. And since then, we have a Valentine craft day, which is coming up on February 7th. We did it last year. We spent the whole day in one of our meeting rooms. We got all of the crafts we could find. I mean, invited kiddos, um, or anybody of any age who wanted to make a Valentine or anything else, uh, Valentine-related craft. And they were welcome to, and we had, I think we had 70 people come through last year. So we're excited to be able to do that again this year, February 7th. Uh, other things we're starting, we have something called, um, senior social. We're going to be doing that on the fourth Friday for a couple of hours, and, um, we're inviting in any seniors in, uh, the community who, uh, don't want the pressure of a specific type of club. Like we have our lovely filters group and our lovely bidding group and everything, but if anybody who would just like to socialize rather than having to focus on a specific, um, type of club, they're welcome to come. We'll have some low-pressure board games and refreshments and things like that in our large meeting room on the fourth Friday, this month and next month. And if it goes well, we'll get to continue that after that. And, uh, we also will have, um, Tech Tuesdays, our tech topic Tuesdays, um, coming up. Um, we're partnering with Rainbow. They're going to come out and present on topics. This month will be, uh, streaming 101. If anybody wants to learn how to get started with streaming, uh, someone from me will be in a library and presenting on how to do that. On how to get started with any streaming service. And then if, uh, people want to also bring up their own questions with their invites or any other tech-related questions, uh, they'll be able to bring it during that period as well. And we'll have time for. Uh, the last Tuesday, right now, we're going to gauge some of the things that we have and ready to have a topic and do that month for now. And then going forward, we'll be either able to do it even more often, or instead of having random coming in topics that often, we'll just have staff on standby for. We get a lot of questions about leaders, they're kind of, um, somebody who wants to have something specific on Facebook, like set up, um, I've had somebody come in and I've shown he has just set up a listing on Facebook perfectly, things like that. That's not always super easy to get the first time around. So for now, we're doing it solid last Tuesday, and if it goes well, we have enough interest, we will have it more often later for tech topics. And so those are upcoming special events and things like that. Otherwise, we also were awarded seed grants, um, we were on an application with a couple of other, uh, organizations in town. And so we were awarded, um, $8,495, $26,000 for our seed grants. And, and happened when, uh, able to submit that application on our behalf. And, uh, once we do some final paperwork, we'll be able to get that money and it will go towards, um, seeding in our kids' area in our Goodvivo. And we'll be able to get some newer bean bags and things in there. We have, they're called Aw stations in our children's area. And they are little touchscreen computers that don't connect to the internet, but they have their gym packed full of, I think it's 100 plus educational games, art, um, apps and music apps and read along stories and things like that. Um, our current ones are getting our warranty and one of them is not working. So with this grant money, I'll be able to purchase two new ones to go in our children's area. And then also be able to purchase some coding robots for our after school school and team Tuesdays kiddos to, uh, get to do some more STEM work with some coding robots. And that is the majority of my updates. Um, happy to take any questions, but that's what's been going on for like, or until last I was. Thank you.
Now, keeping with my order of, or my streak of making a mistake every meeting. Does you guys have any more questions for Aaron? We need to go back to the consent agenda.
I was going to ask, but.
I don't want to go through smooth.
It's okay.
Come up, so I did, I didn't. Well, you know, I also have right here, I realized why I did, and I was like, inside, I totally lost focus on all the cool things you're doing.
That's okay, there was a lot of noise too.
I love the idea of the awesome, so it's kind of fun.
They are, they get a lot of use, especially when, um, parents bring in their, their little kids, um, and the older ones need something to do while the younger ones are, are off playing or something. They're able to put their headphones on and, um, play whatever game they'd like onto the, on those computers. And it's nice that they're not connected to the internet as well.
Yeah, and of course I appreciate all the craft stuff too, because.
Oh, yes.
They, you know, you know, a whole lot, anyway, it's a lot of, a lot of cool things. So, anyway. Um, consent agenda. Becky, is there anything that you needed to clarify on that? Um, no, in the past, we only put minutes in the utility deposit and stuff on there. Um, the, I, I agree to put the income from your agenda if they're within budget, I mean, if you all are comfortable with that. Um, so like the firework, just like that, it was within budget. Didn't see a reason that that doesn't mean that's inside them, so. If you all have any questions or anything else? If not, are we entertaining a motion?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda, Brittany.
Going to move it in second, um, into the discussion. If not, one of us can take a vote.
All in favor? All opposed?
Motion passed. Okay, now let's go ahead and jump on. Erin, would you like to go now?
Next, next time I'll have all of my good 2022 statistics that were really fun to talk about. I want for you to have this money.
And I got to see Marla at any one.
Mariah. Mariah.
Yeah, she had requests before, um, and asked about putting some poppy flowers and grasses underneath the welcome sign, city welcome sign. Um, I don't think this needs to come to you guys, but I put it on the end of the, this, um, so that she can pop off her garden, but you're not here, so. Okay, um, no old business, so moving out the new business, consider for downtown planters. Um, yes, so we took bids for landscaping downtown, the planters. Um, I obviously wasn't here, but apparently previously we had city staff doing it, maybe something between like big, big, some of the time can be paid, but a little bit, maybe pay. Um, so that's a bid, um, more notes, and, uh, we're recommending, we're already at two, the low bid, which is Wolf River Nursery, and in a month of $6,000.
I talked to, uh, Jay a little bit this afternoon, and we were to make sure that we had in there spoken work and we moved the bed plans.
Okay.
She thought that is covered, but I just wanted to make sure.
Okay.
And I, I made a suggestion that maybe going forward that would make a lot of bids next year to include, uh, cleaning up of the planters in late fall. So the bed plants aren't there all winter.
Okay, yeah. Are there any motions?
Make a motion to award bid for landscaping and care of downtown planters of Wolf River Nursery for $6,000. Also good.
It's been a really definitive, is there any further discussion? If not, we're done.
All in favor?
All right.
All opposed?
Motion passed. Item B, consider request of purchase equipment and bid out electrical service for the water treatment plant and evaporation department.
I guess, as you all know, sometime ago, we went out and got a proposal for our evaporation equipment for the lagoons that we have in the water treatment plant. And we were waiting for some time for approval from KDAK in order to go forward. We have received that approval. And so I am asking that we, uh, go ahead and purchase the equipment. And I also would like to bid out the installation of the electrical service to the equipment at the lagoons.
Any other question, Brittany, we need to know?
Yes.
Uh, this electrical equipment, uh, is extensive. Yeah, is there any kind of guarantee on that or?
Is there any kind of guarantee on the equipment? They, all we have with, all we have from this company is a two-year warranty for the equipment. For the equipment. And when they. As part of their process, we asked for some references. That, and so they sent me a few references. One was in northern Iowa. It was a waste uh a waste facility, that water that's kind of similar in chemical. Um you know, kind of the same weight and all that stuff that you would expect. So I I called them and I checked the references and the equipment that they have is operating as it should. And the equipment in the other reference was actually blind water. And I did not, I was never able to get them to respond to me. But in checking with the reference, that one of the references that they gave me. With a similar chemical nature of the water that they have, um I'm comfortable with. The fact that the equipment will work as it should.
No, I understand that it's. It's nobody's fault that 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 this situation is happening.
It it's been a difficult situation for sure. Um it and it isn't anybody's fault. I think there's been changes since some data that our engineer had. For the way it was designed. And I think there's just been some climate changes, things like that. I mean, the data that he had from nineteen ninety. And so there's been a lot, you know, that's. Yeah, a long time ago, so there's obviously been some changes in agriculture, uh precipitation, things like that. Um I do know that last year, of course, was a drought year. And the lagoons actually did evaporate. We lost a foot in the lagoons. However, if we have more rainy years, I'm afraid that we could get up to the top of those lagoons and we could really. And at that point, I'm afraid that would be a very expensive process and we would have to find a place to haul that water to. And that's what I'm trying to do there.
Well, we worked hard to get this going.
Yeah.
I'm certainly not against it.
Yes, what's what's the timing on getting this stuff?
The lead time on the on the equipment is ten weeks.
Okay.
And so I I the way, and we won't really be into an area where we can really evaporate well. Until really April and May, really May, you know, really evaporates. The vast, they say, I think it was two months out of the year. And surprisingly enough, I think it may have been March and. October, and I think it's because the humidity is relatively low at that point. But we'll be able to, we'll be able to have the equipment on site. And hopefully have the electricity installed and everything ready to go by the time the equipment gets here. And then we can uh have it installed and ready to go for the spring. That's that's kind of my idea anyway, or at least my hope, I should say.
Hey, do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion uh to approve the purchase of the evaporation equipment for lagoons from resources. West incorporated in the amount of fifty-three thousand two hundred and eight dollars and twenty-two cents. And authorized soliciting bids for the electrical installation for a good evaporation fitness.
What's second?
It's been moving in second. Is there any further discussion? If not, then.
All in favor? All opposed?
Item C, consider request from we see him under for improvement to leave the property. Yes, um so back before I arrived here, um December fifteenth. And Mr. Unruh contacted uh Winat Ible and asked. If he sweeps his three different properties, um city owned properties, one's airport and then. And we have ground linked with it for him. And he contacted. Winat, he wanted um the city to pay for one ton of line to be applied to the acreage. The contract says um that the W P will um apply at least one ton of line. Uh to the property, the farm property from and um annually. And so because it took two tons of wine, he wanted us to pay the other ton. Um Larry agreed to it and it was um sixty-five hundred and three dollars and thirty-five cents. Um and that is obviously above the purchasing authority, the city administrator. Um so that's why this is coming to you. Um I think that Larry might have talked and we've gotten a hint of revenue off of the crops that are sold, but we not. Um when we bid out the the properties, the lease, and we got, we received rebids. Um and the uh next highest bidders um would have, bidder would have been Jared Locke. At thirty-five thousand sixty-nine dollars to Unruh bid thirty-nine thousand twenty-five dollars and seventy-one cents. Um if you take into account this sixty-five hundred dollars, uh this lock would have been the. Successful bidder because we did not have any plans of investing this kind of money into it. Um you know, the property wasn't, I mean. The condition of the property was kind of as it is, was kind of how it was bid out. Um. And so I guess um I mean, I'm kind of struggling a little bit with what to do with this because we don't have the budget to pay for this. Um and you know, it doesn't, it seems kind of unfair to. Um you know, have a have a lease and then invest this money that we shouldn't have necessarily invested, that wasn't really our responsibility. Um so but then, I mean, they're good, agree to pay for it. Um the other issue, I I believe in problem with Winat that it was agreed to before he actually went and applied the line. I don't think he probably wouldn't have applied it anyway because, you know, he wants to make the the property productive, so he can make more revenue off of it. Um so the and the other issue is he um if he sent an estimate. To install field drain house, south west of the airport runways for seventeen hundred and fifty dollars. I contacted him and asked him, you know, what was this? And he said, well, it's the property or any responsibility. Um we, in our in our lease agreement, it does state that the city is responsible for fixed improvements, but it says if any, then as. Far as I understand, there was no discussion of doing any of this when the lease agreement was signed. So. That isn't just that. So I have personally direction for you all on what you would like me to do.
Andy, you have an opinion on? I think I agree that the the bid documents. Don't say we're gonna pay anything more than a ton per acre.
Yeah, so I always have an opinion. I don't know where we can handle it. So I I think the key point uh to what Becky explained today, because as I read her memo. Um and looked at the documents, you know, he paid for the line. In December, December thirty-one of last year, which is not uncommon in the agricultural industry. And yet the invoice was sent to the city January tenth, so. I I think the key on that is whether Larry made the promise before he purchased the line or after he purchased the line. So that, I think, I don't really know and I I would have to say, we probably need to look at it a little more if. If he made, if Larry made the promise after him had already. Purchased the line and applied it. I don't know that the city would have any liability. The city could though.
So like those thinking on one of these sheets that says. You go ahead and do it for Larry at three eighteen P M on the fifteenth of December.
Correct.
So I I think, you know, if Larry had made some overtures in that that effect. City may have some liability anyway, um although I don't know it would be the full mail that he's requested.
Well, technically, he's similar.
He doesn't have the authority to.
Yeah. That that's my concern is if. You know, now that I'm worried that I miss the insurance, we both can spend money however, but I it's not a good policy then. To agree to spend over the the first hand authority and say, oops, sorry, I already promised.
So.
I don't, I don't know if that has any bearing on it. I I would hate the idea that if he bought it, somebody because Larry said it was okay, but it's still six thousand dollars that.
I I I agree, reading the lease, you know, it was an as-is kind of deal, sure. Probably probably needs some work, obviously, but land improvements regarding the drainage. You know, that wasn't promised in any way at all. I think that one's easy. I think whether it comes down to whether we're going to have some liability. That's entirely possible. Um I would be happy to. Um you know, take a better, stronger look at it. Becky and I can probably try to come up with a better number for you if you want to table the issue. Unless you want a decision on it tonight, so.
Not necessarily. I mean, I it never bothers me to to table if it's some of that we need to make sure or not liable for or whatever. I mean, like I said, I still have many points that we shouldn't have to pay for it since that was one of what he just said, it's okay, but.
I I I guess what I would, I would ask that to be tabled because I think there's an agency issue we need to look at. It's not necessarily exists somewhat, that's what I want to hear. And I follow that, but I don't have it against forty-five.
Everybody else okay with that?
Yeah. Yeah.
Consider it tabled. We don't have, we don't have to have a motion, but I actually go that by now. The table something you can use tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah.
So there are a bunch of the table, it's matter of the all further.
I think you're gonna send it at the next meeting. And it's in the next meeting.
I'll make a motion to table the. Resolution of this uh. Request for additional funds for line within the city's farm property. Also.
Let's go to move in second and for discussion. If not, then.
All in favor? All opposed?
Motion passed. Item B, consider adoption of resolution twenty twenty-three that oh three setting adherence to determine the director at eight oh eight. Give the information, please.
The uh information, excuse me, the information in your package should be uh current. Um the property at eight oh eight Kickoo uh street. Has been declining for several years. Um probably three years ago, there was a a tenant there. I'm not sure if it was, we had been a family member um at the time. And since that time, they've uh removed without the permits, removed the uh existing deck. Or did some demolition at the property. Um. The root system is is failing. The uh there's a on the southwest corner of the structure, it is. The root is caving in and um dangerous that. The exterior cladding is failing in the root system, also the um. The masonry chimney goes out. I'm not sure that it's being used or had been used very often. They would um dent um. Horsehair furnaces in there and that would erode the um mortar in the brick. And you can tell that the mortar at the top of the structure is um deteriorated substantially. And what that would do is. Is uh close the uh chimney or air vent ventilation of the heating system and cause suffocation and that type of. Danger. So I I have determined uh for my inspection of the property that. It is dangerous and unfit uh for human habitation. And that um it is certainly unwelcoming to the community to have a structure like that uh there. Subject to your questions, um that's all I have. Yes, ma'am.
I uh have you talked to uh, is it Miss Miss Traveler?
I ha- I have um in uh earlier events, I had placed the property on um. Uh minimum housing code issues, which um would subsequently uh lead to uh informal discussion. About what they're gonna do to the property to make repairs and um. There was never anything escalated from there. And and since that time. Uh while there was derelict vehicle, unkept yards and um. And the person who lived there removing the deck and that type of thing, so. It is uh it has gone downhill even further from the point that had the minimum housing code issues. So that notice had been received and and signed for by certified mail. Um this uh of late, the notices were not delivered because they did not pick up. Uh the certified mail, so. Um this is an avenue of approaching the um. The circumstances and the hazardous in that structure. Knowing that it could be some raccoons and possums and.
What is the next?
The uh I think of your, in your packet originally, there may have been some um. Uh resol- uh resolution included there and uh there's probably a new resolution. That uh, does everyone have a copy?
Yes.
Okay. Um. This this, what it does is event essentially uh brings it for you to make the resolution. That we uh notify this person by certified mail. And uh give them the ultimatum to uh either repair or remove. Uh the structure. And then if they, if there's not components and it sets a uh. A meeting date, I think of January twenty-seventh.
February.
Uh excuse me, February twenty-seven. Twenty twenty-three five thirty-five. So I think that's in advance of a regular meeting. Uh city council meeting. So I guess it it it's published two times. Um and there's at least thirty days from the uh first publication. So it gives an ample time to reply or respond to this.
Since my Sunday of February. When did it publish?
Friday, the twenty-seventh.
It's the one I have still since, can you get the dates?
I updated it, yes.
Are there any other questions? Now, here's a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three, that oh three resolution. Fixing the time and place and providing notice of a hearing for the governing body of the city of Iowa. And it's at which time the owner, owner's agent, occupant and lien holder. Of record may appear and show cause why the structures located at eight oh eight Kickoo Street in the city of Iowa. Ground cat of Kansas should not be condemned and ordered repaired for demolish.
Third second. So in moving second, is there any further discussion? If not, then that is.
Commissioner Hall? Commissioner Willocky? Commissioner Mendorf? Mayor Shamber?
Motion passed.
Dave, I have a question for you. True, um going out at our work and then.
Uh there is uh three three ten Iowa Avenue.
It's going back to the way it was. I know they're trying to fix it, but. I'm not talking about uh carpentry.
And actually, Tony, I think that's something that in that we will eventually have a discussion in the back. A grand discussion first as far as issues like that. I haven't actually addressed that specific one yet unless anybody else wants to. I just didn't wait until we kind of did.
There's one one comment is that there have been no building permits for any of the works been done there.
Thank you. It it will be, it will be addressed again, I'm sure, so. Um, okay, we're talking about the mission being staff, right? You already spent some of our money, anything else?
I don't have anything additional tonight unless there's any specific questions for me. All right, thank you. Thank you.
Chief?
I have nothing, but you know.
Same.
Yes, um one uh one item is I met. One, uh, one item is I met with, um, staff this morning, so I had that meeting. Um, and told them that they only had to come to the meeting if they had something on the agenda. Which was met with a lot of. I did ask that they attend the February, everyone attend the February twenty-seventh meeting. Um, because at that meeting, we will be doing a workshop. Um, we'll do, um, housing and maybe have a couple other topics as well. So we'll keep that February twenty-seventh agenda pretty short. So that we have a beautiful plan to do with our workshop. Um, and then you saw in your packet, there was the M T I schedule for, I believe it's Municipal Training Institute, um. There are several classes I think would be very beneficial for, um. For commissioners, if you're available, uh, certainly the city officials fundamentals, which is on the plane for February. That one's virtual, which is great, um. Dave has already signed up for it. Um, and then, uh. The, uh, advanced municipal finance, it's not actually, that, that you don't have to do them consecutively, the municipal finance and advanced municipal finance. And that one virtual, so I would recommend, um, that one as well, that advanced municipal finance, the municipal finances in both cities, so it's kind of not. Dear acceptable. Don't think we're gonna get any attention for that. Uh, but those, um, I, I've done both of those, um, classes previously and they're excellent. So I would recommend doing them. Uh, and then of course you can do any of the other ones that you're interested in. Um, we are, um. Our department heads are going to be doing the H R one-on-one. Um, on the first of February. Um, and I will probably go to a few at least that I haven't mentioned. Uh, and then also in the packet, it was the chamber mixer, which is February twentieth. Please let me know. If you are going to meet in a minute, then you will reach our CD. Two things on twenty, you know, fundamentals and, that's right, I know, I'm being, no, the fundamentals is sweet. Oh. Alright, anything else? Um, okay, so I'm next. Um, something I'm gonna try and do every meeting if I can is, is there are a lot of times that we have to. Make hard choices, make hard decisions. And I don't always want to focus on the hard stuff, but I like to focus on some of the positive stuff that's going around in this community. Obviously, a lot of mine is going to be focused on education and athletics, so that's. Most of my circle, and so I would encourage the rest of you to. Look at, at good things that are going on in the community, even if it's just somebody that you know that's done something fantastic. And I think that. I'm, I'm a firm believer that positive builds on positive. So of course, I didn't, why is my voice got side? That would have taken care of my positive, I could have saved one for next, but. But I'll go ahead and do, I'll do it two for today. Um, I just wanted to comment. That I can't, I don't remember what year it started, but several years ago, Jody Tombley and. Um, Dr. Pete Rosé started a youth basketball league here in town. Saturday League, it runs. The first year, it was just the month of January and we had thirty-some teams, um. And she had, she paid for official, officials to come in and rent the games and it's just anywhere from. Second grade, right, grad second grade, second grade on up to sixth grade, um, games every Saturday. I was there, they pulled me out of retirement, so I'm officiating or renting the games again, just a little bitty's, cause I, I don't do big people. But talking to Jody now, of course, Dr. Pete, no longer, no longer does it, but it's, it's Jody Tombley. And Kylie Reski and Jeff Moore are now in charge of this, this league. Um, this year, we have seventy-eight teams in this league. Um. Kids from thirteen different towns come in on Saturdays to play. Um, they play at the high school, the middle school in the armory. Um, and games start at eight in the morning. I'm not looking at, I said, and class is till five or six.
Six.
I mean, all day, every hour, and there's a game schedule. So just imagine the amount of people and this brings into our town and. The restaurants that, that see the benefits, Walmart that sees the benefits, um. The country have a food truck was out there at the games, uh, on Saturday. Selling food for people, cause there are some, some teams, I think, that play two games today, maybe.
Yes, that's right.
So anyway, um, and they don't get paid for this, um, they, and. Not only do they have the money to support the league and pay the officials, but then. The amount of money that this basketball has, um, contributed to the. Schools, you know, they bought, um, basketball balls, they, I think they've done score clock, they. I don't, I should have asked them anymore, but they don't like. So what a great positive to build on, um, and those are the things that. They do without expecting thanks, and so that's why I want to give a chance to put that out there and I would really encourage my fellow commissioners to. Look at your circle and see what things we can. Keep building on that positive, so. Um, last thing is, Dave, I'll be attending local government day. On Wednesday, I'll go with, with Becky, meeting with. Um, Senator Pyle and Representative Garber in the morning. We'll see how that goes. It always is good to just keep our faces known, so we'll be doing that. And that is all I have. I believe so. Evans, you're next.
Well, since we're talking about basketball and stuff like that, um. I remember he used two D to referee those games in there. So. Wrapped a lot of those games there, it is a great program and everything for the kids to have that. Uh, to go to every Saturday and, and everything. It's a lot of fun watching them kids grow. Through the years from when they were just little sports, still like, get into middle school and high school. But, uh, also another thing I'm worried before too is the, uh. Uh, the building of baseball and softball association buildings coming along. If you ever been out by it. Need to take a drive out by there, take a look at it, cause it's gonna be a neat building to talk, we didn't. And that's gonna be another big plus for the kids.
I haven't been by Thursday, I haven't been. That happened.
It's gonna be.
It's good.
It's big.
We're good.
Yeah. But, uh, yeah, that's all I'm gonna.
Can I start home?
Well, I don't play basketball, but I do like playing tennis and watching. As everyone said, uh, kids grow up, uh, up there, and I watch you grow up. And then the great. So much for both of us. Um. I really don't have anything, my first meeting, and, uh. I just want to say thank you and it's certainly good to be back and. I'm excited to be sitting out here. Uh. And. That's you, thank you.
Commissioner Mendorf?
Uh, Commissioner Becky, happy birthday today.
Yeah, you can reach me on my first day work.
Now, I can bring you back for a little bit this weekend and get the streets cleared up. It's over in last year long, but. Appreciate everybody's efforts and. Get that done and.
Oh, no, we haven't started yet. I knew we were expecting at least one starting. Okay, I would need a, a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion, sure.
Second.
Move in a second. Um.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?